This is the August 13th meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. We'll call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion to accept the bills?
Make a motion to accept the bills from the July 16th.
A second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? So move, thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of July 16th, 2018?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the July 16th meeting?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Unanimous, thank you. We do not, I don't believe we have a student rep tonight. Is there anyone from the PTA here tonight? I do know that plans are in the works for another Ghosts and Goblins 5K. I look forward to hearing about that when PTA is able to join us again. Anything from special needs pack? There being none? Anything from the Clinton Teachers Association?
Nothing received.
Thank you. Is there any public comments? Not at this time, as always, we reserve the right to come back to that if the need arises. Mr. Superintendent, your report.
Alright, so the first thing we have are the facilities updates, and I know I did not go on the walkthroughs with all of the school committee members as they went through, but I know that our director of facilities, Russ did, so I don't know if you want to just have, Russ is here tonight to join us, if we want to have Russ come on up.
Thank you, sir, for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having me. I'll be here all night. So we just finished our, the walkthroughs, you were all there, and we'd like to show you that, what's going on for the summer, so I know that walkthroughs are a little earlier than they typically are, but it's good to see how much work is being done and what the guys go through in the summertime. And all the schools are all really going the extra mile this year, we're pushing them a little harder than they've been pushed, and I think getting the fruits are going to be worth it. We've done a lot of work, especially in the middle school, with the new hire of the floater, custodial position. We've gotten probably seventeen or eighteen rooms painted out in that room, which hasn't been touched in a long time, and they've done full top to bottom cleaning there, and I think once everything's done in a week or so, it'll be a huge difference than previous years, and that's what we're hoping for. So in the elementary school, they're doing a great job down there, getting that place ready for the school year, they should be all set, no problems. Middle school should be all set, no problems. High school's looking great, the rooms are looking great, everything's looking shiny and bright. We've got a little bit of a hiccup with the, a little mold intrusion, that's being dealt with, that should not affect the opening of the school. Outside company's in right now cleaning it up for us.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, that we had the, we had some, like, condensation moisture issues that led to some damage in the ceiling tiles, some mold on the desks, that is being professionally remedied.
Remediated, yeah.
And, and we did also file an insurance claim on that.
Right, the insurance company's fully involved in the process, so, in fact, I met with their engineer again today, just to solidify our position. Then, in this school, the fire alarm panel was repaired today.
Oh.
And so that's, no yellow lights, that's a good thing, so we'd be good to go for that on that one.
And that wasn't, so that wasn't a full replacement yet, that was still repairing the old one.
Yeah.
And we're in the process of still trying, now that we've got that fixed, we're still moving quickly, but we're trying to look at some potential, we're still trying to go through more of the, the right bid channels and try to make sure that if there's a more cost alternative solution, cost effective solution, that we find that.
Right, in the long term. The issue we have right now, the manufacturer was in there's proprietary system, so we're stuck with them for whatever happens, and if we switch out to a non-proprietary system, we have much better pricing, and plus we'll have to replace everything, so we'll have another twenty years of no issues, hopefully. So those are the big things here at the school, but none of that is going to affect the opening date at this time. Some of the comments on the walkthrough were, you know, a lot of wear and tear items, and say for the high school, we're talking about parking lots and things like that, it's been on everyone's minds here and at the elementary school. There's a big ticket item that we really need to look at, it's probably one of the first things we're going to put on for the capital plan, is to repair the parking areas, go that way. And we've just finished up the energy updates in this building and in the middle school, and so those are both supposed to save approximately fifty something thousand dollars a year in energy savings, and we're just about to undertake the elementary school, which would be another twenty-five thousand dollars in, in energy savings yearly, and that number will increase as prices go up, which is a good thing.
Well, it should be noted that we won't realize that savings for probably three to five years, depending on what it is.
Three to five years, yeah.
Because part of that savings is used to finance the projects through National Grid.
Right. It's a shared savings program, we have a very small capital outlay, like six or seven thousand dollars to get into the program, and then the savings pay for it, and after that, it's all ours, which, it's no reason not to do that program. We've got here the fire station.
I've got a couple of things real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I have, haven't put it right, I did the grounds with Casey Gannon, but one of the things, and I don't know if it's, who's responsible, I guess, I guess, but you now, is the vegetation over along, from basically from the pool all the way to the, where Casey's thing is, on that side of the road, so now it's blocking, it's come growing over, up over the sidewalk, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I know we talked about it around the thing, is who's going to cut that back, whether it's the DPW or.
You're talking about kind of between, like, the middle school and the pool?
Right, yeah, so that length of the road, the highway, so you got the vegetation on the football field side, but now it's gone up, so now it's blocking half the sidewalk, so it's kind of growing over it, so.
Yeah, if it's growing off of our property, it's our, it's our responsibility, you know, so we're stressed on manpower.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, I don't know, I'm sure, like, in fact, I was going to get to the DPW in a second, they did already, like they did last year, fill in all those potholes and fix that, you know, down there behind the, kind of the fire station, so maybe if Chris has a couple extra guys, he just cut it right down, you know, but it is blocking, you know, a good portion.
Someone's actually gone through and cut it back once already this summer, and so we have to do it again.
Yeah.
You know, would you, you know, if, in the future, I'm going to be asking for another staff, you know, outside of, you know, the exterior, because there's a couple hundred acres we deal with, and the sports needs are great, we have a huge facility, and there's no reason, we shouldn't be taking care of it, the first-class facility that it is. It's good now, but it can be great, and that's what we're going to strive for. But right now, to answer your question, that's our job to do that.
Before we go now, it's cool. Go on.
Yeah, so on the fire station, I don't have anything new on the fire station, I know that Phil had bumped the, bumped out till the fifteenth of August for the retreat, receipt of all the proposals. He's got two in hand right now, and so once that's done, and he goes through and quantifies, whoever, whoever, you know, comes forward, we'll want to get down to three vendors and see which designer we want to go with, and move forward on the process, based on, based on the grant.
And he did do the, I think it was a week ago, they had the, kind of the open house, I guess, of the facility, so that potential vendors could come, look at, look at the open, look at the fire station.
Yeah, there was good ten to twelve firms that stopped by, some of them I know for previous, you know, architectural jobs, and so a lot of good quality firms came through, and so we're hoping for a good turnout on the fifteenth, when they're all due, and then after that's done, well, next steps on the fire burn.
So when we, they come through with the reports, is that what we'll get the accessibility report, as far as?
Yeah, so they would be doing the, like, the feasibility study to say pretty much what the building would need to be made usable.
Yeah, it's a feasibility study based on the program that was developed for make-space and that kind of thing, and, you know, committee may decide they want to do something different, they may want to go that direction, but this feasibility study is narrowly focused on that and supports spaces for the make-space.
Can we get, and I know, you know, a million things going on, but can we get, like, a monthly written report or some kind of spreadsheet showing, you know, like, we just mentioned all, like, the different things that are going to be, have to be done in the future, so, you know, it's not a big, you know, because I'm sure other, every other department has something that needs to be fixed or paved.
No, no, no one else needs anything, no.
Yeah, so at least we'd see something monthly, kind of see, you know, the extent of all the, you know, everything, you know, kind of like that wish list that we had with the old Warren article, so.
Yeah, that's not a problem, we can do a, we can do a bold list for you guys, not a big guy.
I know ultimately our goal is to try to, you know, sit down and work together out, like, the master kind of capital improvement plan and the preventive maintenance schedules and those types of things.
Right, it's not going to take time.
Yeah.
And we're, we're getting there, slow steps, but we're still putting a lot of files.
As long as we update it as we go, then we see kind of what we're. So we're not asking the same questions, like, hey, what's up with it?
No, no problem.
Are you still, I don't know if you and Mr. Hayes, are you, Mr. Hayes, are you still getting the, the Worcester House guys, are they still helping out painting?
They just finished up, they did Tuesday through Friday, and they did the whole main office area, great job.
Yeah, okay, that worked out well.
I know you had them last year, I think, that's awesome.
We had hoped to have them then do the hallways on the first floor.
Perfect.
Both.
Thanks.
Yeah, they're always available for us if we need them, it's never-ending source of
Any other major concerns or issues that came up during the walkthroughs that you would like to sort of share or bring forward? I know Russ was on them with you, so obviously you guys should all be on the same page. I know I didn't attend these walkthroughs, I'll do a walkthrough with Russ, kind of closer to the beginning of the school year, just to kind of check the actual, you know, more of a, you know, are we ready for game day type walkthrough?
So, the majority of the things that I had to bring up from the walkthrough, Russ already brought them up.
Okay.
One question I did have, though, is as far as auditorium and the rental of that facility, I know that we have, you know, needs that are coming up, and I didn't know if the money from the rental is going to be earmarked towards either new equipment that's needed to take place in that auditorium, or if we have to look at earmarking that money.
Yeah, I think it depends, I don't think we've had a whole lot of rental of that facility, but I think we can, the actual auditorium itself, I think we might have had a couple things, but I don't, that's not, it's not nearly the request we get for the field, but the, but, you know, so right now, we typically don't necessarily earmark things directly, we put it into the, into the rental facilities account, but I think we could look forward to that, as I think as we, I think it comes back to sort of what Mr. Bailey was saying, where it's sort of, if we can get the, if we have that sort of list that we know, okay, this is where auditorium, you know, sound equipment or whatever falls into there, then we can start scheduling for that, and if we want to look to the rental facilities money for that, then we can do that.
And the other thing I'm looking at is, so if we're looking at, you know, as we get rental income from that to go back towards repairs there, but I'm also looking at the middle school, elementary school, when we look at their stages, they're very small, almost, you know, nonexistent in many cases, so I know they run a lot of great events that are, nothing's happening here at the same time, I didn't know if the middle school performance, we could look at bringing that up here, other performances, elementary school, look at bringing them up here, so that we can have this as our showcase and have our, you know, entire student body to get advantage of.
I could say, and I think it's a great idea, is to, you know, whenever it's feasible, to use that as our kind of performance showcase, yeah.
Right, the middle school, they have an excellent performance, but it'd be great if it wasn't all at the same height level.
Right.
It's not an issue for us, but for other people.
Okay.
I appreciate you taking the time, taking us around, it's helpful, it's always helpful, I've had tours with the custodians as well, and just to see, you know, that close-up view and then that five-hundred-foot view, I think is really helpful for us to be informed when it comes time to advocating for resources and budget needs, and so, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you're very thoughtful, then.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ.
You're there.
Alright, so the next agenda item is handbooks, so you guys are received, you should have six handbooks, three student handbooks, three employee handbooks. We did sit as an administrative team last week, the assistant principals really worked on kind of, we kind of, kind of jigsawed it a little bit, the principals worked on the employee ones while the assistant principals worked on the student ones, and then they kind of got back together by school to kind of go over some of the changes, just trying to get more of the language and that kind of stuff consistent, I think that's something we want to try to, try to build, is some more consistency between each of the buildings. I'd say that the most notable change is probably in the high school student handbook regarding cell phones, and that was a big discussion that we had, and really what it would do is it would allow, the way it's written right now, and we were thinking this would almost, could almost be something that we're sort of, at least the way we explain it to the students, is that really, this is something we're trying, and if it doesn't work, then we can always come back to the school committee and change it and go back, but looking at allowing the use of cell phones during passing time and lunches, and then that way you have, the idea is to try to move from a stance where we're sort of just telling students to put their cell phones away and sort of acting like they don't exist, to realizing it's become such a part of everyone's life, they're using them somehow, right? So during the day, what you end up doing with our current, with our previous policy that we had, is you end up driving cellphone usage into places you don't want it. You end up, so like, if a kid wants to use their cellphone, now they go in the bathroom, and they're on the bathroom stall, and they're, and they're texting, or they're doing whatever, and then now they've got basically a recording device out in a, in a bathroom, or a locker room, or those places, places where there might be, you know, easier places to kind of hide. So the idea is to basically try to teach students, there's an appropriate time and a place to use this technology, give them that, and then we can be a little more consistent on, you know, it can never be used in a bathroom, though, it can never be, and should never be, never be used in a classroom unless a teacher tells you, this is for educational purposes. So the idea is, you know, I think, when you, when your policy is just, you know, no usage at all, it becomes very hard to effectively enforce that policy across the board, and as soon as you start, you know, sort of telling one kid, hey, just put it away, and then telling another kid, give me your cellphone, you start creating those sorts of issues, but I think that this policy aims to try to approach it from more of an educational standpoint, where it's trying to teach them that there's an appropriate time and a place to use them, and that you need to do that, much like in the workplace, you know, if you, you might be able to use it during your break, you're going to be able to use it during your lunch, but you shouldn't be using it while you're, you know, on your, on your shift or during a meeting or those types of things. So that's probably the most notable shift, you know, most, everything else in there is, you know, fairly, you know, fairly minor, I'd say, like I said, a lot of things, might be looking at different verbiage between code of conduct, trying to make sure that at least is a code of conduct in all the handbooks, and those types of things, so.
That's true for both the high school and the middle school, correct?
For the cell phones?
Yeah.
I think for the middle school, they've added the different cellphone consequences, but they're not allowing the use of cell phones, correct? Is that correct, Emery? Yeah, so the cell phones themselves are not going to be permitted to be used, it's going to stay the same policy, but they added the disciplinary consequences of, like, cellphone registration and cellphone restriction.
Yeah.
Which is just a way of, so typically, so when I, in my previous district, we transitioned to more of a policy like this at the high school, and the way we did it was that your first cellphone infraction, you had to register your cellphone, so basically you had to tell us your cellphone number, sign a little piece of paper that said you understand the cellphone policy, we called the number to make sure it was really your cellphone, and then that was on file. Then the second time, now you might get cellphone restriction, which basically means, you know, hey, for the next three days or five days, or depending on which offense it is, every morning you have to come, hand your cellphone in at the office, you get it back at the end of the day. So it's trying to basically say, if you, if you can't handle it appropriately, then you can't have it during the day. And it just kind of, it's, it's a way to sort of, it's more of an alternative-type disciplinary approach to it, so that a kid, you know, in the middle school habitually using their cellphone, is not eventually leading to, you know, we're suspending a kid because he's, he's looking at his phone all, over and over, we have some other avenues.
Yep, and I appreciate it, that's a pragmatic approach, I think is the only way to go, it's not that dissimilar from the policy that we have in my school.
So like, the two of you, I mean, I've seen this and have used the policy like this other places, my only question is, because the smartphones are advancing so much, technology things that we're thinking of today might not even be out yet, what is the definition of use? What are they able to use it for? What's appropriate use? Is that spelled out somewhere, or does it look against this policy?
I think it just says that the teachers have to give them permission, otherwise it's not appropriate.
You're saying, like, in the hallway, or in the?
Right, so we're going to give them access to the phone, you know, my concern is, you know, there's a new app that comes out that's inappropriate, there's, you know, recording or footage, what is considered to be acceptable use? What can they use their phone for?
Okay, yeah, and I think, you know, I don't know if we define, I think that, I know in the paragraph where it's in there, I think there are some limitations on there, like they can't use their headphones and, you know, play music, that's going to disrupt people, that kind of stuff, but I think that, you know, I think the other way we could look at it is, they can't use it for anything that would violate any other section of the code of conduct, you know, if you're using it for, you know, bullying or something else like that.
Mostly it's addressed on the internet part, too, right?
It does specifically say no recording.
Yeah, and it seems to be fairly clear, anyway, that they shouldn't be used unless otherwise directed by the teacher, so if, if you have it out and you don't have permission, you are in violation.
When they're given access in the hallway.
That's at the middle school, you're saying, though, but the high school, if we give access to it in the hallway.
But it does say no recordings, and it also says nothing that would go against any other.
So you have, they have to sign off on, they have to sign off on the handbook?
Yeah, so they should have read it.
What I'm asking is, I'm not asking to change this policy, but just thinking, like a former vice principal?
Yeah.
Is there some clarity that can be provided to them, so that on their first violation, they don't take advantage, because it's a good thing you're trying to do for them?
Yeah.
So if we can get ahead of it, educate them, so that they can't subly not know that.
Yeah.
You did, we educated you in home room, and here's the material.
Okay, yeah, so I think maybe we can work on, we have another admin meeting next week, maybe we can talk about some of those tips to go over with the students for the beginning of the, the school year, so that we're more, more clearly defined as.
Right, I like the direction we're going, we're trying to treat them like adults, and we'll treat them like adults until they show they can, but it's just if we can educate them a little more.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And for the second offense for the high school, the first offense, if you do mistreat it, was a warning.
Oh, sorry, warning, then cellphone.
The second case was cellphone registration?
Yeah.
What exactly does that mean?
So that basically, that's where you sign off, saying you understand what the consequences are in the policy, and then you tell us your cellphone number, and we call it and make sure we know that that's your cellphone. Now, here's, from experience, here's why that becomes sort of an important step, because in, in a previous role, I had students that would have four phones on them at any given time, they'd have their real phone, and they'd have, like, three others that didn't work anymore, everyone's got old cell phones laying around their house these days, that are, you know, so they, teacher might say, hey, give me your cellphone, they'd put it in their pocket, walk away, teacher say, hey, give me the cellphone, they'd say, fine, give them the cellphone, and it was the wrong cellphone. So if they've already had to register it, now you can, you can call it, and you should see it ring, yeah.
Well, no, because the sound's supposed to be off.
Yeah, show me the caller ID, but that's, that's part of that, and it's also having them sign off, so they understand that, you know, hey, the next time you get caught, we're taking your phone, and this is how it's going to be, and if you don't want to go down that road, you know. So that was really the biggest change, I mean, I don't know if anyone has any other specific questions on the handbooks, you guys are, we can, I can address any of those, or we can have the principals address them, or if you're comfortable with them, we can just make motions to approve them.
I would, I guess I would just ask, is there anything the principals wanted to call to our attention? Any of the handbooks? Okay, any questions? Would anyone like to, so technically, I think we only have to, we're legally bound to approve the high school handbook, but traditionally, we've approved all of them, given them a stamp of approval, everybody's okay with that. All right, can we have a motion to accept the handbooks?
I'll make that one.
Both, both, sorry, both the faculty and the student handbooks?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Ed's not here.
Is there any discussion on the motion to accept all six additions of the CPS handbooks? There being none, all, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for all this work, everyone.
I'll tell you, no matter how many times you try to rewrite and organize and work a handbook, there's always something that's going to come up that you're like, I know that's in there, and you're never going to be able to find it.
Yeah.
All right, so the next thing is just, you know, working on plans for this year, so there's a series of things in your, in your packet after the agenda, there's our goals, identified five goals, and the, so they are, you know, curriculum, these are, and a lot of these came from either the strategic plan, or they came from the district strategy that we worked on last year. So make sure we have an aligned curriculum, working on our academic interventions, our social-emotional interventions, meeting diverse needs, and student safety, and so those are really the five areas that we, we kind of came up with as an administrative team. Those are how they were kind of written as a goal, with like, kind of a smart goal with, you know, a time, you know, something measurable, timely, you can see the next page is a professional development plan, and that sort of, kind of spells out a little more some of the steps that we're going to take to hopefully achieve these goals, so you can see there's sort of some, you know, outlined steps for each of them, and then following that is another professional development, it's labeled professional plan, but it's kind of just the grid of, you know, how we're going to use our professional development time, how that ties back to those district goals, and then, you know, I guess that's the first part of this, is just those goals. I guess then the next, following that is a letter that's going out to the staff shortly, next day or two probably, talking about welcoming everyone back, you can see I wrote it with a little bit of pirate speak there, as we're going to try to use, teach like a pirate as sort of a theme to kick off the year. Pirate is an acronym for passion, immersion, rapport, ask and analyze, transformative, and enthusiasm, so we'll be talking a little bit about that, and then it has sort of our agenda for the professional development for the, or the first two days. What we're going to try to do is do breakout sessions, so over those two days, we've come up with about four breakout sessions that we would be able to go through, and the idea of the breakout sessions is, we want to be able to more tailor our time to the specific needs of different, different groups, so instead of just having big, whole group sessions or even building-based sessions, with the breakout sessions, we can make sure we have more time to pull, you know, jobalike groups together, or those types of things, and I think, oh, and then the last one, kind of under this section, that I have the school committee meetings, I penciled in a school committee schedule. Now, I will bring to your attention in this schedule, that you can see from October 15th to December 17th, all of those have a star next to them, because they're all, they basically all become non-normal meetings, so I know that's a lot of meetings in a row that are not normal, as far as our regular second and fourth Monday, but the, so the 15th was delayed a week because of Columbus Day, so then I looked at it, and I said, well, if we, if we delay that a week to the 15th, then we could push back the next one to the 29th, because there's five Mondays in October, then the November one was going to end up having to get pushed back or changed because of Veterans Day, so I figure if we push that back a week, that kind of, you know, keeps us going there, and then by doing that, then that means the second kind of November one becomes December, and then we get two meetings in December. So I just want to bring that to your attention, this is how I kind of just drafted it out when I was looking at the calendar, we don't have to, you don't have to approve this tonight if you want to double-check any other, you know, we know our next meeting date's August 27th, if you want to double-check your calendars and just make sure, if you, I don't know, if you guys have penciled off the second and fourth, you know, Mondays for the next three months, this is how, when I kind of looked at it, I thought this might be a good way for us to space out our meetings and to stay sort of consistent on the Mondays, rather than having a bunch of Tuesday meetings in there on those holidays, if you prefer another one, we can, we can look at that. And then if you notice for the focus, what I tried to do for the focus, I tried to, instead of, last year we did a lot of stuff that might have been building-based, like, we had certain things like a high school update, a middle school update, this year what I tried to do for the focus is I took specific areas from the strategic plan, so I figured what we would do is we could report out on those different days, on the progress we've been making towards the goals of the strategic plan area, I figured that's way, it's a, it's a good way to frame sort of, you know, what we're doing and, and make sure that we're, you know, living that strategic plan that we worked on and, and working on that. So I know that's a lot of stuff I just kind of went through, I don't know if you're comfortable with, you know, if those are, you know, if you want to approve those goals, if you want to approve the school committee calendar, or if you are, you know, want to think about the school committee calendar and get, and provide any feedback, and we can get another draft on the 27th, so I don't know what your, what the pleasure of the board is.
Do you want to look at them one by one? Do you have any questions? Do you, is there more information you need from Dr. Meyer or the team?
I'm good with, with all of it. The only thing, uh, with the school committee dates is where Ed's not here.
Yeah.
All right, so, so we could table the school, we can call it a tentative calendar.
Right, I'm good with that.
Have him review it.
Right. If that works.
Yep, so, so do, do we wanna enter, do we wanna, does someone wanna make a motion to approve the district goals?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second motion.
Uh, motion being made and seconded, are there any questions on the goals? There being none, all those in favor of accepting the goals? Unanimous, thank you.
Now, this is just the district goals. I would need to still get you my individual goals, and I know that the, uh, DESE is trying to get us our MCAS information a little earlier this year, so hopefully when we get that in a timely manner, and I use that to write some of my individual goals. So we'll revisit my individual ones, um, at that time. Thank you, all right. So we've approved those goals. The PD stuff, I mean, that, the rest of us just sort of backed up. That doesn't really need an approval. The calendar, we'll leave that as sort of tentative, but we'll, we'll, we'll bring that back up at the next meeting and just see if, um, if Ed has any input. And then, uh, he can cross-reference it with the Celtic schedule or something. And then, uh, the last thing in here, under this sort of heading, was a back-to-school kind of event. So this year, uh, we talked about trying to do, you know, in past years, uh, there's sort of been, each school's kinda done their own sort of orientation-type day. We talked about trying to get something, do something together as a district again. I know last year, we did the Fun in the Sun event. We don't have the luxury of an eclipse this year.
Or sunshine.
Yeah, or sunshine. But we also had a couple other weird things, too, where there really isn't a orientation day needed at the middle school, because the fourth grade aren't moving up this year. So what we decided to do is maybe try to just, um, kinda lump it all together into, you know, the high school will still kick off, that start the day with the freshman orientation, but then we'll have all the buildings open, so any new students, or people that just wanna come and maybe try to find their, you know, their new classroom, or whatever, see the, where they're, you know, where the new, uh, you know, sixth grade hallway is, or anything like that, they can come see the buildings. Then we'll try to do a little cookout, um, over at the Veterans Athletics Complex. We'll have some, you know, grill up some hot dogs and stuff, and try to get some bouncy houses and music, and just have a little fun. And then, uh, at six o'clock that night is our athletic registration night back at the high school. So kinda start and end at the high school, um, but really, the whole district is open. And, and we wanna invite anyone, you know, community members, um, you know, if, if someone's, you know, listening, and they've heard Russ talk about different things going on in the buildings, and they wanna come see the buildings, they're all open, so, um, they should, you know, anyone's welcome. And I guess while I'm talking about the athletic registration, I'll just remind everyone again that there are no athletic fees this year. There is a, the athletic registration paperwork, um, you can start filling that out. A lot of it's been all moved online this year. When you go, if you go to the Clinton Athletics webpage right now, there's a link to go to the new Athletics webpage, so you wanna make sure you click on that link, and that's where you'll find the registration forms. We've gotta still do a little bit of tweaking to the actual, um, school page, but there's a link to the new page, and that'll have the forms. And I think, go ahead.
Any, any questions on, um, Happy New School Year event, or? I, I just wanna say, I, you know, to be able to do this, um, takes many hands, it takes leadership, and thank you for that, but it, it, uh, you know, it's still summer for our teachers, for the school personnel, and, and I just, you know, I'd like all of them to know how much we appreciate the effort, uh, to make something like this happen before school officially begins. I just, I think it's a great statement about the direction of our schools and, uh, and just the open sense of community, and, and as both school committee member and parent, I'm incredibly appreciative of the effort.
Also, one other thing, I think the PTA, is it the PTA that does the school supply kits? So I think they're gonna try to give their school supply kits out that time, too, at the, at the schools, so people who ordered those can come pick them up that day as well, so. All right, um, so that's kinda where we are with our preliminary plans, as we, as we look to the rapidly approaching school year. The next bullet's on policies, there are just three policies. It's family medical leave, small necessities leave, and parental leave. So these are policies that are just basically written as, they're, they're written based on the, on the law. These policies were crafted by our, um, legal counsel. So it would just be, it'll, we, we have a FMLA policy currently. It would just be an update to that policy, and then we have, the small necessities and parental leave would be new policies. So, um, if there are any, you know, questions on those policies, um, you know, we can look at them, but otherwise, I think they're, they're pretty straightforward, because they are, like I said, there are, there are basically just policies, um, to be in compliance with these three acts.
And it's amendments to our existing policies, so it's not necessarily a first or second reading, we're just...
Family and medical leave will be, I don't think, we didn't have the other two, right?
No, we don't have the other two.
Yeah, so the other two are new. The small necessities and the parental leave, we did not have a, a policy on, so those ones would be new. FMLA would be, uh, like, uh, an amendment or an update, um, so.
So, so let's, let's take the first separate from the other two.
Okay.
Can we have a motion to accept the amendments to the FMLA policy?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. And as the other two policies are, um, new, uh, can we have a motion to, uh, accept them as a first reading?
Can I make a motion to, um, the SNLA and parental leave as a first reading?
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded to accept as a first reading the SNLA and, um...
Parental leave.
And parental leave policies. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you, unanimous.
All right, so some staffing updates. We have had a lot of changes in the last, uh, in the last month, particularly in the last, um, couple days. So we have received, um, resignations, uh, or been informed of resignations from Sarah Boudreaux, who was a first-grade special ed teacher at Clinton Elementary School, Jenna Tolan, who was our elementary and middle school librarian, Nicole Robbins, a Clinton High School PE teacher, Katie McNamara, Clinton Middle School Grade Eight English teacher, Lacey Hale, Clinton Elementary School Adjustment Counselor, and Melina Torini, CHS Instructional Assistant. All of them have resigned in the last, since our last school committee meeting, essentially. Most of them, I would say, um, at least half of them are directly related to moving closer to home. When we looked at that, it's a, a job closer to where they live. One was to, um, pursue, uh, her education, and then, uh, two of the other ones are kinda slightly different reasons, I think mostly economic. The, we have one other request, is that Valerie Andre has put in for maternity leave, effective the second week of September, so I think we do need to approve that maternity leave.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Would anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you.
So, and so for current openings, um, you know, basically, we just read that list. We still, um, at the elementary school, we're working on a, uh, the special ed teacher for grade one, and we're still working on a school nurse. Uh, that position had been, uh, had been filled, and the person, um, backed out. We have the librarian specialist for, the library special for elementary school and middle school. We've also posted it, we reposted it a little bit as a, more of like a literacy special, because we don't really need the library certification necessarily, and we were trying to just sort of get a wider applicant pool. The middle school, we're working on the grade eight English teacher that was just posted, and the, uh, oh, and then the elementary school, sorry, also has a school adjustment counselor. The high school, I know they're moving along with the physical education. Yep. And then we have actually two IAs. One is the, um, uh, special ed, and one is sort of a, it's not a full-time position, but it's basically to be kinda halftime, and it's a point nine. It'll be halftime to kind of backfill, um, for the portion vacated by the, uh, athletic director, and also to help with the alternative program, so it's a point, point nine. And then the central office, we're still looking for a special education, well, Special Education Secretary, we're moving on in that interview process, so that's, that's well underway. The biggest position that we're having trouble filling right now is a BCBA. We just, we're informed by another candidate today that she's not gonna accept the job, so, um, I've tried to give this job away, uh, three times, and it's, and we're running into trouble. So I know Loretta has, um, reached out to some of our collaboratives and some other, um, professional groups, or, uh, private, private schools, to start looking into the, um, possibility of contracting, uh, BCBA services this year, and getting some quotes on that, and looking at how we might be able to handle that with, based on the quote of the contracted price and the, and the actual days and hours that we would need for the BCBA caseload.
And I'm sure you've already thought of this, but with some of our smaller communities that are surrounding us, they don't have a need for all day, you know, I don't know if we could maybe job-share with them?
Yeah, looking at seeing what they have. But that has been the, uh, that's been by far the hardest position to fill, and I think it's just, it's such a demand right now. And you're fighting with, and you're, and you're fighting, there's a huge demand in the, in the private sector, where they're working 12 months a year, so. So we'll keep working on it, and I'm sure, you know, we'll get it all done, you know? It'll be, in two weeks, we'll be ready to roll, so. So that's just some updates on that, and like, like I did last year, uh, my goal will be on the, you know, the night of the 27th, at least, to try to give you sort of a breakdown of who is where, so you know, once we have all that kinda straightened out. So we'll get you a more comprehensive staffing update on, on the 27th. Just a couple other topics. Vocational education, um, two kinda updates on that. One, we did have a student who moved into town, um, who's a senior, who attends Norfolk Aggie. So we are gonna have to pay the tuition for that student this year to, to finish their, um, uh, career at the agricultural school. And, uh, so that was, that's one update. You know, he's a senior, so it's, it's one year.
What's that cost?
It's, it's a lot. I don't have the exact dollar now, but more than Aseved, yes. The agricultural schools are very specialized, and they have a, um, they almost have their own subsection to the law, even for the vocational schools, so, um, so there's, uh, so we have, we have to absorb that. And then the, um, I was, I did talk to the, um, the principal from the Lemmonster, um, vocational school, uh, again, and, and they're still in conversation, you know, he was trying to have some conversations with the superintendent about, um, still looking at possibly exploring if there's any way we could partner, um, with Lemmonster still, so. He seems very open and to the idea, he wanted to talk to the superintendent a little more, but we did have a conversation about it. So I think that that's something, and we brought that up, I think, about this time last year. And I just think that, you know, I think regardless, I think it is something where, you know, I think we'll, kinda how we saw this year, where it played out with the, um, with the number of Aseved acceptances, that, you know, I think regardless, we wanna try to come up with some sort of, um, preferred provider agreement, whether it's with Aseved, or whether it's with Lemmonster. I think we need to have something that's a little, maybe a more defined, um, agreement in place. And the last one, school lunch prices. So, uh, we had a meeting, um, this morning, actually, Karen and Dave Van Ass and Nan Hyten, and I met to look over. So on August 6th, um, the state came out with their reimbursement guidelines of sort of how, what we're gonna get reimbursed per meal. In that, part of what they call is equity in meal pricing. So equity in meal pricing sets a minimum charge that you're allowed to call, you know, you're allowed to charge for, for lunches. The equity in meal pricing minimum for next year is, um, $2.92. So our, our meals right now are listed at, at $2.90. So we, basically, we have to raise the prices. Also, what we did at that time was we looked through the budget, the, the meal count, the anticipated expenses. You know, and last year, I would say, our, um, our food service program, I wanna be careful how I word this, but it's almost like they, for the fiscal year, ran in the negative, but they had enough money from their revolving account in previous years, that they were able to absorb that. But I think, uh, going forward, we wanna make sure that we're not in that position. So right now, the recommendation is to increase the paid student lunch amount to $3. From $2.90 to $3. All other prices for students would remain the same, uh, as far as meals. The breakfast would stay the same, the free and redu, the reduced rates would stay the same. And the other prices that, that I don't think you guys necessarily set, but the other thing that they're looking at is, we don't get any reimbursement for any of the, like, the snacks or à la carte items. Those are sort of, you know, you pay, you know, you might pay, you might get them at sort of a slightly reduced rate or something through your purchasing, but, uh, there's no necessarily set reimbursement rate for those à la carte or snack items, so, um, we are gonna make sure that we assess those prices to make sure that they are, um, in fact, um, you know, profitable. And you hate using the word profit, 'cause our goal's not to make a profit, but our goal is to break even. And right now, you know, that's where, um, you know, we were just a little bit below even last year, so we wanna just try to get, get up to even, so we don't deplete anything that's, um, that's in there. So I guess the only, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I, so I don't know if we're ready to, um, offer a motion to raise the cost of lunches at this point.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we were, I asked for us to explore again for this year, if it was beneficial for us to go to the free lunches, go for the approved program.
Right.
Have we had a chance to look at that, the cost analysis? I, I know last year, you showed us that it was gonna be a loss for us to go forward with that program. I asked for us to look at that again.
Yeah.
Do we have any answers as far as where we view that program?
I just know our situation, I didn't run the exact numbers, so I can get the exact numbers if you want, but I know that our, um, our financial, our free and reduced rate that we're being, um, our direct cert rate is, is slightly less than it was last year. So going forward with that program, it would, it would put us in less of a reimbursement situation. So, um, I mean, I can, I can certainly put together the exact figures for you, but I don't think it's going to be favorable. It should end up being, like I said, more of a deficit than last year. You know, I think the, the challenge with it is, um, you know, like I said, we came up with last year was while your reimbursements go up in that, you're, you're losing all your cash receipts in that. So then, when you combine those, that didn't, that offset didn't, didn't match up.
So when we go for a program like that for reimbursement, the price per lunch, does that go into how we get reimbursed for that particular programing?
For which one? For the, for the, like, if we do the universal one? No, it just means everyone would get, um, there's like a set price, we would get reimbursed for all the meals at that, at that point.
So do they reimburse it $2.92?
It's right around there. It's like $2.92, $2.91, something like that, yeah. I think it might, I think the reimbursement would have to be $2.91, and then that's why you have to have your prices at $2.92, so.
So again, would someone like to make a motion to raise, uh, the, um, cost of lunches to $3?
I'll make that motion.
No one wants to make that motion?
Would someone like to second it?
Oh, second. I'm sorry.
Hold on a second, just, we, we have a motion right on the table, and then, um, we'll bring you into it. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion? Or public comments? Or an expert witness?
What do you got for us?
I just, I couldn't hear very well, you know, if he was asking about the free lunch program at all.
Yeah.
We did that again this year, Nan and I, and it came up for us when it was last.
Right.
So last year was about $30,000. In the deficit for us, it was larger than that to move forward?
No, it didn't. When we applied to the state for the free lunch for all program, the percentage was lower than it was last year, so it wasn't...
So my question, very simple, is, last year, it was gonna be a loss for us to go forward with that program.
Yeah.
If we were to move forward with that program again this year?
It would be a greater loss.
It would be a greater loss.
Yeah.
Okay, and last year, just so the public understands, we were looking at a greater loss, and we're right around $30,000.
I believe so.
So the feedback we're getting is it would be larger than that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry to make that confusing.
Any other, any other discussion, comments? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all I had.
Okay. So, uh, thank you, uh, those of you that, well, thank you, all of you, that took your portions of the superintendent's evaluation into me. We were supposed to do this, uh, in July, and I wasn't here, I was, uh, on vacation, I apologize for that. I, I didn't get it done in term, in time to get it into the agenda, so, um, I would ask that we just, um, make sure we make that an agenda item on the 27th. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Thanks, I'm sorry. Thanks, I'm sorry. Is there anything from the policy subcommittee, other than policies that we just reviewed tonight in the first reading?
I'll probably reach out to the policy subcommittee. Actually, one of the things I need to put on the next agenda item is just to refresh our subcommittees in general. So I want to make sure I do that on the 27th, is, so that we can just look at the subcommittees, and if you guys want to make any changes, we, I...
Sure.
Typically, I would have done that earlier, I just kind of slipped my mind, having, pretty much having the same board, you know, continuing. So, so we can look at that, and then sort of as we look at that, probably in the near future, we are going to want to have a policy subcommittee meeting. One of the things I do think we need to look at is sort of our substitute hiring policy, particularly in light of some of the anticipated minimum wage changes that are going to be kind of coming in over the next, you know, few years. We need to make sure that we're not violating any labor laws from that respect. And then there might be a couple other ones that I had some notes of that we just wanted to visit. So I think probably the next step would be, maybe on the 27th, we'll try to reorganize the subcommittees, and then probably shortly after that, we'll do, try to schedule some meetings of the new subcommittees, if that's okay.
Anything from the marketing subcommittee?
Uh, no, there was no meeting.
Okay. And safety committee, it was really just an update.
Yeah.
You know, we just were continuing to meet from a school slash town perspective. I think it's been productive, I think there's a spirit of partnership, and I don't have anything...
No, we're still trying to move forward with exactly the logistics on the SRO. We're still trying to set up a meeting between, between us and the chief, just so we can hash out some of those logistics. I know we've reached out to try to schedule it, and, you know, I'm sure we'll, we'll get that done in the next week or two. Just to kind of, you know, a lot of, a lot of districts, you know, there's certain memorandums of understanding, maybe certain things around what, what information can the SRO have access to regarding what students, those types of things. A lot of times, it has to be, you know, I know sticking points I've seen in, in other districts are, you know, your SRO can have access to the student information system, but they should only be using it to look at students who are referred to them. They can't just kind of hunt through the student information system and see who's, who's been suspended, or something like that. So, you know, just little things like that, just kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's, we just want to make sure that we, we get that done. But everything, I think, is, is, is on board for us to have, you know, an officer, as a school resource officer, come in the fall.
Super. Is there anything on our old business? Anything on our new business?
I got one thing, Joel, if you would like.
Okay.
And I know I talked with Mary and Steve about this, and you kind of touched on it with the, with the summer break, but I was very impressed with the, the, kind of the flow of information and the updates on the, all the websites, you know, all three schools, the district side. I know I talked to Steve about it, you know, people put on social media asking questions, and the quick answer is, if you go to that website, it's always there, you know, everything, whether it's, I know you touched on the sports, but the sports, the first day of school, all the information that was kept up all summer long, like Joel said, you know, most people have got enough going on, and you're trying to get everything else going, but it was just pretty amazing, and I know I touched on it, I can't remember their names now, you keep telling me, there's two people that do the website, but...
Donna Beck is kind of our web, web coordinator, and Chris La Perle is like our assistant one. Between the two of them, I think they do, they do a great job.
Amazing, really.
Not only getting it up in a timely manner, but also they kind of jazz it up, too, you know. I'll give them a little, I'll give them a little blurb, and next thing you know, it's got clip art and colors, and, you know, that's, that's great, so...
Keeps my mind focused.
Yeah.